Okay, I'd like to open the Deerfield Planning Board Meeting, July 11th, 2016. It's seven o'clock here at the town offices, Conway Street in South Deerfield. Our agenda tonight is we're going to review the minutes and we have some public comment. Public hearing for the Eaglebrook solar array. We have an A and R on Sugarloaf Street. Some discussion on the subdivision bylaws and then set a date for our next meeting. So, you guys all looked at the minutes from last time? Do I have a motion?
Can I?
Yeah, you can.
I can move that we accept the meeting minutes as presented.
For the second?
I'll second.
Okay, great.
All in favor?
All in favor? Are those opposed?
Want to discuss?
They want to discuss them a bit, I think.
The only thing to discuss is that you were saying that the hearing, this took longer than it reflected, but...
Yeah, I mean, we did a lot of discussion during the public hearing part, but it really didn't seem relevant to anything because they're pretty much stymied right at the point. I think, that's my opinion I got.
Yeah, and I think the minutes really kind of got the essence of the conversation.
Here they come. Here they come.
Okay. Hey there. We got going. So, do you want to...
Okay, so we can...
Talk about the public hearing now, or do you want to deal with the A and R?
You want to vote the minutes then, or do you want to...
Oh, Rachel made a motion and you seconded it?
Yep.
Right.
And we discussed it a little.
We're just discussing, just saying that the public hearing was, took longer, but in fact, what was included in the public hearing is here.
So, we want to vote, we can vote.
For the June 9th minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did I get, did you get some of this? Some here. Do you want to set them over there? Who's...
I only have one copy.
Two for the night? I could keep the other one.
Oh, okay.
A and R?
So, there's no corrections to the June 9th? No one got corrections?
I don't think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, now, we'll see. Roger, you have to abstain.
Roger wasn't there, so he should abstain.
And the rest of us can vote.
Yeah.
Five zero one.
One, two, three, four, five.
Four, five, five zero one. Okay.
Any public comment? So, can I, did you already go over the agenda? Did you add anything to it?
No.
Could I add something?
I did.
It came up on Friday.
Yep.
New business, we have someone who wants to talk about a property on Graves Road. Just a preliminary discussion.
Okay.
So, that can go on to new business right after the A and R. How's that?
So, C.
If we could make it B and move that B down to C.
We can do that. Green Street or Graves Road?
Graves Street.
Graves Street.
Do we have both?
No, that's what I was wondering.
Oh.
I was going to say, that's Conway.
Yeah.
Excellent. So, is there anyone here? So, no public comment? Public hearing regarding, well, I'll read the whole thing to be official, but I just wanted first to find out, is anybody here to talk about the solar up at Eaglebrook?
All right. So, we have that sheet, sign up sheet too. We probably could pass that around. We have people here.
And, um, did you, I didn't hear anything about it today, did you? Is Doug around? Does anybody up there?
No, there was no contact. And, you know, we were speaking earlier that the last time I spoke with Wes, they were just going to sit on it for a while. Pat made a suggestion that we reach out to them and ask them to either withdraw it or we can deny it without prejudice, so they could come forward at some future date.
All right, so let me read the thing, so we can officially open it and then we can decide that we can probably continue.
Because I didn't have a copy of that, so I couldn't have done that.
I'm hoping I have a copy of it. I know I do somewhere. The hearing continues. It goes back several... I would like to open the, or I would like to continue the public hearing.
At 7:08.
Regarding, and it's at 7:08 here on...
It's about the Eaglebrook.
July 11th, so I'm going to read the whole thing, just to make it official.
Do you want to confuse yourself again? I think you should.
We're going to open a public hearing.
I welcome.
Yeah.
On a request received from the Allen Chase Foundation, doing business as Eaglebrook School for a site plan review and special permit regarding a proposal to install two ground-mounted solar arrays which will connect the Eaglebrook campus. The combined power generation of the two arrays will approximately be 1,317 kilowatts. Arrays will be installed on the corner of Keats and Jingle Road and off of Rice Ferry, Rice's Ferry Road. The location's owned residential agriculture. Copies of the site plans and site plan application are available for inspection at the Deerfield Town Hall during regular business hours. This hearing was first on May, we did this on May 9th and then again on June 6th and then June 9th, and it's been continued to this evening. So, again, is there anybody here to speak about this? Seeing none, what, do we want to just continue it one more time and then ask them for our next meeting to make the decision?
Sure.
Continue till next time. And are we going to meet August 1st? Might as well do that while we're talking about it.
That's the first Monday of...
It says here, Monday, August 1st.
Thanks. And did you make sure in the minutes that Rachel was...
Yes, I'll put that down. She recused.
Accused herself?
Accused herself at 7:10. 7:08, actually. Rachel.
All right, so, all those in favor of continuing this public hearing until our meeting on August 1st at seven o'clock?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, two, four, five.
Five zero zero.
I asked Doug, and he's going to.
He's been in touch with him, I think, he just said, they're waiting here from every source also. It's not just their decision, they're trying to do the extra things.
I'm back.
So, do we have to put, we had to put one abstention for Rachel, or just zero? Would it be five zero zero?
An abstention, no.
Well, you weren't here when we voted.
Because you weren't here when we voted.
So, I guess she's not...
So, I'm going to put five zero zero and we'll, you're accused yourself.
So, that's all for old business. New business, we have an A and R for Sugarloaf Street. Dylan Corpita. Do we, who has the folder? Do we have a folder?
I saw it, it was at right there, I was sitting.
Oh, yeah.
It's right on the desk.
This whole new setup's going good because usually we're all like closer, we could all point at the map together.
Why don't you have this moved up then?
Is this being, is on tape?
Yes.
So, we received an A and R and it looks like it was, the fee was paid and it was received on July 7th. And it's, the proposed change on the plan is to convey parcel A to somebody.
DK or E Sugarloaf, that's the entity that owns the property. That's me.
All right. We don't really talk about conveying, we talk about creating a new parcel.
What's building number four and six?
Four and six is the Primos Building, right here in the center of town. They're the same structure, but they have two addresses they touch.
Yeah.
And to your question, Mr. Wade, ultimately, I don't believe there will be a new parcel created. I would attach this new parcel to the deed of the original, it would become one parcel, but because that's a two-step process, filing through the registry.
Right.
Before you guys technically, for right now, I guess it is a parcel, but I don't, it won't be again.
Right, because you, number of existing parcels is one, number of new parcels is one.
Right.
So, what do we do?
Well, there's two. You're not going to combine them?
I will, but they're not technically combined until it's done, I'm told, with the registry deeds, so that's where.
Okay.
I went back and forth with Doug on that, about how to, how the application will read. Basically, I'm just looking to expand the parking lot in the back.
Okay, that's what I was going to, my next question is what you were trying to accomplish.
They're going to combine, so this line and this...
I know, but did he, did you just buy this, Dylan, or did you own it already?
No, it was Fisher's Garage, part of their property. Frank is actually here, and so he and I have been talking about it, and basically, there's a fence in the back that's on the existing property line.
Yep.
More or less, and we're just going to move it more or less to the new property line. That's...
Southerly.
Parcel A.
Let's see, I guess it'd be easterly, kind of. It's moving.
The road goes in an angle.
Right, yeah, it's at an angle, so it's...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm missing something. Everybody seems clear on what we're doing, but I'm not...
This parcel was owned by Fisher's.
Okay.
And Dylan is buying this piece.
Okay.
And he doesn't want to create another lot. He said he's going to combine that with his existing piece of property. So, that's what he's up to.
But what are we doing then? What are we endorsing?
We're endorsing, I guess, maybe this property line?
I was told I needed it to be signed by the planning board in order to go before the registry, even though technically, based on what I'm doing, you guys wouldn't normally need to opine, because I'm not creating a new lot, there is no frontage. That's what I was told.
But basically, we are creating parcel A in order for you to...
To attach it?
To attach it.
Okay.
So, that's why they need us to do it.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're right. And it does say right there that it's not a building block, not...
Right. So, right now, this parcel A does not exist.
Right.
It's part of this property.
Yes, so you're going to use this right of way to get, creating that piece of property.
That right of way, this predates my own building. I believe that was for Fisher's to be able to use. Where that right of way ends, there's a gate right now, which they use to drive, to do towing. I believe that was the origin of the right of way, although I don't know myself.
That's why...
I don't need it or won't be using it, because that's the sheer driveway I have with the day lily that will just go into the back lot that will be my property.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay.
So, this is kind of an issue I've had, and I know Dan Warner, I've talked to him about it. When he does these drawings, he's got to tell us what's existing line and what's the one that we're voting on.
Right.
Because it's, right now, they're all dark lines, they all look like...
Well, no, the heavy black line is the new one, the smaller black line is the old one there, I think.
There's a 4,000 square foot, not exact rectangle, but sliver, that's the new...
The line coming from Sugarloaf Street going back, it's half the width of the new piece of property line. You know what I mean?
Would it be helpful for me to come point this out?
Yes.
See, this line is not as wide as this new line.
Yeah, but you're guessing now, Paul.
No, I'm not, I'm looking at it, I'm saying it's, the width is different.
So, existing four, six Sugarloaf lot is this frontage with these two structures, and then straight back here is finger.
Right.
The day lily existing is this little inset in here. That's their little sliver, so Fisher's Garage comes back right now and across and up into here, this is all them. So, basically, I'm having this portion right here, instead of being part of theirs, it's going to be part of mine, their new line will be here. The fence right now, more or less, goes like this, and we're just going to move it back to this new line.
But this is the existing border. We're now creating this one, so by creating this, we're creating a parcel, which then you'll take this one away.
All attached down to this.
Yep, that makes sense.
But that happens later, that doesn't happen now.
That happens to the registry, not us.
Yeah, but I think you can see there's a, the line of the new property is twice as wide as the line there.
On this map, it isn't.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, this is the Mylar.
And you definitely are.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to, on the, what are the proposed changes that we're going to endorse? It's to create parcel A.
Yes.
Not to, not to convey it, because we don't do conveyances.
But you're right, we'd have to create it, because it could be...
Right, so that's the difference. So, on this, that would have been, that's when Dan wrote that, it says convey a parcel, that's not what our job is, that's where he...
So, I just said we're creating a parcel.
Yeah, yeah, creating it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm good.
All those in favor of endorsing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Excellent.
We ha, sign away. Let's go, signing party.
Six zero zero.
Oh, it's today's day.
Thirty seven eleven.
Yeah, eleven. Daisy eleven.
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
The slushy did it.
Okay, okay. Who moved that? Roger did? Okay. Who seconded it?
I did.
Okay, Rachel, okay. All right.
Do you have the two pages, Rachel, of the application?
I just have the...
It's in the, it's tapped to the...
It's attached to the...
I know, but there's no page two?
I don't have page two, no. But it just says at the bottom, that's what it says.
Number five, what was the proposed changes to the plan?
No, I know, but this is a two-page application.
Yeah, no, I don't have...
Oh, I see.
I believe Doug had mentioned that Dan may have used an older version of the thing or something, I don't know.
What's that?
That was what I got, and it filled out.
There's usually something I can sign on the back that says we endorsed it. All right, I'll follow up with him.
Thanks.
Yep.
Need to run around with...
I didn't sign the other one, but I think we've got enough people to sign them, so we're okay. And who, who made the motion to continue to next month?
Kip did.
Kip, and who seconded it?
John did, it was him.
John Wade?
Yeah. Rachel, I'm going to sign that one on three, four.
One, two, three, four, those are the signatures.
I didn't get that one yet. You can take one.
We can take that Mylar and bring it to town clerk, I think.
I don't think it takes the registry deeds. Town clerk's gonna do it.
Oh, he didn't do a lot of copies, so we'll keep those two. Sure.
And you take it to the registry deeds, they don't even take them anymore. They don't, no, they scan them and give it right back to you. And if they do that, why do you have to have your Mylar? The old days, that's what they used for reproduction. But now they scan it, so...
Planning office and building inspector.
Is that why you keep this?
Yeah, we used to, we have six, but no one ever did anything with them. Cutting down on paperwork. Thanks, Dylan. Yep. So, Phil Les called me and asked if he could talk to us about a project you've got. Do you want to come on up to the table there and tell us about it? And as I said, this is a preliminary, we didn't receive anything ahead of time, right?
Thank you.
So, you guys want to introduce yourselves?
I'm Richard Fitzgerald, my wife Lauren. The property is property her and her brother inherited a few years ago, and we want to sell the property. There's a minimum building lot and a house with more land. The minimum building lot on the map is 59, the land is 60, it's on Graves Street.
Oh, so it's a huge lot to the back.
Correct. So, I've had discussions with Dick Kalaszewski. If you're confused about the last one, this one's going to confuse you a little bit more. So, Lot 59 was Lauren's grandmother's, and it's separate ownership. It's been a separate lot, the town's assessing it as a building lot, has been assessing it for $75,000, $85,000. Lot 60 is a duplex, that was her parents, that her and her brother have inherited. They'd like to sell that to the daughter.
To the who?
Her daughter.
Her daughter, okay.
Lauren would like to sell it to her daughter. Her daughter can only afford so much, so what we were hoping to do was to be able to sell off the backland of Lot 60 to a neighboring farmer. So, the back of 60 is a farm field, currently used, and so the goal is to sell that to a farmer. We would like to do a line from the back corner of 59, the northeast corner of 59, at an angle towards the side boundary. I understand it needs to be 15,000 square feet, minimum lot for a two-family.
Is that what it says? I mean, we can go double check, but it's an R.
We went back and forth, Dick had thought it was 12,000, when I looked at the bylaws, it looked like 15,000. We'll make sure we got that right.
Yeah.
But why we're here is that your current bylaws require 125 feet of frontage for a duplex.
Okay.
And this has 80 something.
So, it's non-conforming at the present time.
And if we create, if we lop off the front of it, are we making it more non-conforming, or, I mean, we're just, we're altering a non-conforming lot, so that creates certain issues.
So, this is CVRD, and what is the, what's the lot size for CVRD?
I think the frontage is 100 foot.
Well, he says 125 for a duplex.
Right, 100 for a single.
But I'm just wondering what the square footage has to be.
Oh, I see, there's footnote, so then you've got to go on the footnote.
Right.
So, that's what you've got to do.
Yeah, so...
Increase by 25% for two-family dwelling, 50% for multi, so you're talking, so 25% of 100.
Okay. Right, so that's why I think that it's 12,000 minimum for a single, and the math, I think, makes it 15 for a duplex.
25%.
I suppose 25% more is what you're saying.
16.
16.
Twenty, a fifth of 12 is three times three more than...
All right, 25% of...
A fourth of...
Twelve is three, all right.
No, a fourth of 12, a fourth of 12 is three, so 15.
Yeah, okay, it's not a fourth of 16, okay.
Right, yep.
All right.
So, what's the square footage?
12,000 is the square footage, so then it would be 15,000 for a double.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, so that increases also by...
Yeah, the same 25%. That's what the footnote says.
So...
And how big is it now?
Well, 4.4 acres.
The lot is huge.
Lot 60 is?
Lot 60 is 4.4 acres. We're not looking to alter 59, no, that's a...
Oh, okay.
Lot 59 is a grandfathered standalone lot.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there that, you know, that's there also. The goal here is to make 60 smaller, to drop the price to the daughter.
And then sell it to a farmer, yeah.
Sell the backland, but I understand we have to sell it to a budding farmer, or a butter, we cannot create a landlocked parcel.
Right.
So, I've been through that with Dick.
Well, no, we actually just created a landlocked parcel tonight.
I saw that.
So, I'm not sure, you can't do it, but it can't be a building lot.
But it's attached to a neighbor, it's on the same...
No, it's the same thing he's...
That's what I'm saying, I think that's what you're saying.
You created a lot that the butter is acquiring.
Right, that's what he's...
He answers right away in.
So, it'll be the same thing here, we're going to have to create it before we can technically sell it.
Right.
But the sale will be two in a butter, so...
Because no one else could get it.
Right, so we're here to get a sense of whether this is objectionable or not before we spend the money on a survey. Dick Kalaszewski suggested that we have this conversation with you before just doing a survey and then coming and asking.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering what happens with your frontage once you're redoing the lot? Did he say what he thought about that?
The house lot would not have the frontage for a duplex or a two-family, which it is, but you would have the total square foot for the lot.
We're not going to put frontage to the back lot.
No, no, but if you're changing this lot, is it still going to have a duplex on it?
Yeah.
It's an existing duplex, it's been there before.
Right, right. But we, can we endorse the lack of frontage, though? That's my question.
We're not endorsing the lack of frontage, it doesn't have it already. If he was going to change the frontage, there might be an issue, but he's not changing the frontage. That's going to stay the same. All he's doing is changing the square footage, and they're going to allow enough square footage to meet...
Meet the 15...
15,000 square feet, so...
Yeah.
Right, so...
And then the frontage would be grandfathered.
Yeah, so personally, I don't think there's an issue, but...
No, that's all I was asking.
Now, you know, all this is contingent on the farmer, a farming a butter, buying that back piece, which is our next step. You know, we're trying to do this one at a time, figure out what we can do here, all with the goal to sell the duplex to the daughter.
Right. So, I think the question why Dick asked you to come here is because whenever we do look at any kind of rezoning, we could say, oh, you're going to meet all the new ones, right? I think that is...
Right, but since there's an existing house, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it's applicable.
Unless it somehow really was detrimental to the town, I don't think you could make that case, because all the lots on that street are tight right there.
Right, right.
Well, I guess he's asking us, if it came in front of us, would we endorse it?
I know, so I'm also thinking, does it need a special permit? Does it need anything else? Is it just, just an A and R?
You're creating a lot without the proper permits. You're changing a lot, by changing...
Once you change it, you're creating.
You're creating a lot.
Max is right.
But we did basically the same thing to what we just endorsed.
Corpita's wasn't, there wasn't a building lot, so it was...
This isn't a building lot either.
Well, no, where the duplex is, we're basically recreating that lot where the duplex is.
That's the awkward part.
Maybe I guess you can look at it that way, but I don't see it that way.
No, I'm sure.
I'm altering the existing building lot. I hear what you're saying, Roger, and I agree with what you're saying, but I'm just saying, are we technically, you know, endorsing a smaller frontage on it?
We're not endorsing it. Now, you know, all this is contingent on the farmer. A farmer, a butter, buying that back piece, which is our next step. You know, we're trying to do this one at a time, figure out what we can do here, all with the goal to sell the duplex to the daughter.
Right. So I think the question why Dick asked you to come here is because whenever we do look at any kind of zoning, we could say, oh, you're gonna meet all the new ones, right? I think that is...
Right, but since there's an existing house, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it's applicable.
Unless it somehow really was detrimental to the town. I don't think you could make that case, because all, all the lots on that street are pretty tight, right?
Right, right.
Well, I guess he's asking us, if it came in front of us, would we endorse it?
I know, so I'm also thinking, does it need a special permit? Does it need anything else? Is it just? Just an A and R?
You're creating a lot without the proper frontage. You're changing all, by changing...
Once you change it, you're creating.
You're creating a lot.
Max is right.
But we did basically the same thing to what we just endorsed.
Corpita's wasn't, there wasn't a building lot, so it was...
This isn't a building lot either.
Well, no, where the duplex is, we're basically recreating that lot where the duplex is.
That's the, that's the awkward part.
Maybe I guess you can look at it that way, but I don't see it that way.
No, I'm sure, I mean, I don't...
Altering the existing building lot.
I hear what you're saying, Roger, and I agree with what you're saying, but I'm just saying, are we technically, you know, endorsing a smaller frontage on it?
We're not endorsing it.
It's there.
It's there, already exists.
Actually, you're creating the back, that's the new lot, the front lot is the same. That's a way, yeah, I guess that's how you...
Yeah, like if we're, if he wanted to take some of the square footage, uh, frontage off of it, I'd say, yes, we could do it.
Right.
Yeah, but he isn't.
Right.
Because we did look at that to allow access to the farm.
With some kind of right of way.
Yeah, we realized that's not, that's not gonna happen. And then, you know, Dick's comment was, well, you know, it is a right to farm town, so you sell it to a farmer. I mean, how, how can you object to that?
Right, so I will say that, here's the thing, and this is kind of apropos of what Max is saying, that when, there are two ways of looking at this, and one is saying it's like Corpita's property issue, where you're saying, we're selling off the back lot to a farmer. That I can, that's easy to get behind.
Right.
See, that, so it's interesting, this is really, whereas if you're also then talking about a grandfathered piece of property, we don't wanna go around town letting, you know, grandfathered property is, is non-conforming, because it conformed to another standard.
Or didn't conform to any standard.
Or whatever, but it was created before there were standards, you know what I mean? In other words, it was, it was created by a different set of rules, what are non-rules? And so when we come in and we say, oh, well, no, there are rules now, we are making it a lot, essentially.
Do you own fifty-nine?
But it is, there is that.
Two different owners.
Those are two different ways of looking at the same problem, and I...
Max, stick with one thing.
But that, I think that that's, that's, that's the discomfort, and I don't think that, I think that if we look at it as we are allowing a homeowner who happens to have a non-conforming duplex, you know, two-parent, two-family house, to to sell off some of their property to a farmer that would otherwise be landlocked, has no other benefit to the town in any other way, then that would, that would feel more comfortable to me than, than actually coming at it by saying, we wanna make it, do you see?
But the issue with that is that once we make, all we do is endorse the line, they can sell it to whoever they want, even though they, you know, that's, that's...
But they can't, because it's not gonna go anywhere.
Well, they're not asking us to endorse it right now, they're, I think they're looking to get the...
But I'm just saying, there's only so many things that we can do.
Well, that's what would make it more like Dylan's. That was, that would make it more like Corpita's.
They could sell it to anybody they want, but whoever's gonna buy it would want access to it, so...
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So it has to be, you know, they either have to come up with a way of getting access to the property, or sell it to somebody that has access.
Already has access.
Right. And I think, I think one of our major interests here, when we're, when we're doing something like this, is that we, there has to be frontage to the, to the lot, if we're gonna approve any lot. And so if it's tied to another lot with frontage, then it's, I believe that's, there's there's two things, one is access, and one is frontage, and anything else, we, you know, those are the, two of the main things that we have to do as a planning board.
I don't think you need frontage to create a lot.
I'm not saying you do here, Roger, but...
I'm saying anywhere, Paul. Whoever's gonna buy it would want right of, a right of way, or some, some means of access to that piece of property. Doesn't have to have frontage, I don't believe.
Could I just take a pause? We have someone who might be able to help us too. So Pat, have you, I don't, put you on the spot, but did you get, you were, you saw the emails about this, so could you weigh in and give us...
I have to admit, I wasn't sure on the emails exactly what was going on about this either. So I just happened to open up the zoning here to your section twenty-two fifty-four. This is in regards to non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures. So it says that non-conforming, single and two-family residential structures may be reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed upon a determination by the building inspector that such proposed reconstruction, et cetera, or change does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure, and the issues of a building permit were applicable. So if the building inspector determined that he thought it would be, the nature of the structure would be potentially more non-conforming, then it would go to the board appeals, who could allow that by a special permit? So that would be the process. If the building inspector felt that it didn't work, then you could go to the ZDA.
That also sounds like if there's nothing on the lot.
Well, no, this is, this is talking, it sounds like it's talking about the building itself, like if you're adding a porch on it, so it's not as directly relatable to the change in the lot. So that was, and that's, that's a little bit of a, an issue with it. It is true when you're signing A and R plans that you need, as Paul said, to confirm that there is adequate frontage and adequate across that...
Those are the only two things that we have to do.
Frontage.
We have to have frontage and access, those are the only two things I remember.
You're not ever saying that it's a building permit.
Yeah.
That's, as you pointed out, that's a subsequent decision, and all of the plans always have stamped that you're not...
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying that I'm gonna say, hey, he's gotta have a hundred and twenty-five feet. I'm just saying that any lot that we create, if it has no frontage, I don't think we can create it. Unless somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna attach it to a...
I disagree, you can, we can create a lot that has no frontage.
You just did.
Well, we did, but that, but it's given to somebody that had frontage.
It was being created for the person purchasing it. So if you brought the farmer in, and he said, I wanna buy this piece from these people,
That's what I'm...
and I have this lot, and I wanna attach it to my lot, then that would be...
See, I think what I was saying that in relation to is, is that if the two parties that dealt with it, Corpita and Fishers, and if Kip, you came in and said, I'm gonna buy that parcel of property, I don't think that could be done, because you don't have any way to get to that property.
And why would I buy it?
No, but that's why Corpita can buy it, because it attaches to his property. When they're budding, it's...
It's a budding issue.
It's a budding issue, it's not, it's not a third party.
You grant it right of way over the existing property, the frontage that's there.
But then you have, that's a whole nother process.
So I guess what I would say is maybe what you're doing is creating the new lot on that existing frontage. Think of that perhaps as the lot that you're creating, the smaller residential lot that is already non-conforming as to the frontage.
That's what we're saying.
And as long as you're leaving enough of the lot size there to meet the dimensional requirements, then you are not creating any additional non-conformity, other than you now have this big outlot back here.
Yeah, but it still belongs to the person that owns the front lot, so that doesn't matter. You can separate two lots for the same ownership, but you can't, you can't go to a third party, I don't believe.
I agree, that we're not making it more, the one that's on the road with the frontage now, it's less than it should, but it's, we're not creating more.
It will be more non-conforming to currently be.
No more non-conforming.
That's where keeping the fifteen, as long as it's fifteen dollars.
And how are you gonna draw that line? Rectangular lot or an angle, you said?
I think it's gonna have to be an angle to get the fifteen thousand feet. I haven't done the geometry.
Because the other ones aren't the ones along that road.
Well, like I said, if you draw the line straight across from fifty-nine over to sixty-one, I don't think that's gonna be enough for fifteen thousand, but I haven't done that math yet.
But even look at sixty-one and sixty-two at further back, so it might be more like that.
So if you just squared off the lot there...
That's one, I mean, we'll talk to a survey about it.
That's your, that's your business.
Are sixty-one and sixty-two also duplex? I mean, two-family homes.
Single, single family.
Single-family home.
Do you know Graves Street at all? You know our Myfield, like, your key bodies?
Yeah, yeah. For Myfields?
That, that line will partly be determined by what the farmer wants, too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I mean, the easiest thing is just to do a straight angle, one line, but if there's a valuable little corner in there, we might have to alter a little bit something. Our goal is to bring the farmer in, absolutely.
Me personally, I don't think I would object to what you wanna do, if that's just your question today.
Yeah.
I'd get, I'd get your ducks in a row, though, so that...
Well, Paul, I think...
That's just me personally.
Exactly, that's what I, I think he really, he really cares what we think more than what one of us says.
No, no, I know, but I think he's coming to us not for a decision, but for an opinion.
Right, correct.
That's why, that's why I'm just saying that.
There's nothing to make a decision on, I know that.
So it sounds like if you're in the right, and Dick didn't give you, he'd say he'd have a problem with it as far as a...
He thought it was a no-brainer, quote-unquote.
What does it say there, that he, I mean, he doesn't, this doesn't need a building permit, so why do you even go to him?
So he could, he could determine that it didn't increase the non-conformity initial building permit, but that's not what they're going for, so I think that's why he kicked it out.
But when they do something here, if they make it more non-conforming, and he wants to put a porch or something in that house, then it's gonna make a difference at that point.
And they might need then to go to the ZDA for a special permit if they want it.
But that would be the daughter.
So you don't see this needing any kind of other special permit?
I, just from the description over there.
So you're making a new lot, so it's an A and R. All right. Get in before the new zoning, or is it better to get in before the new zoning goes into effect or not in Massachusetts?
Doesn't matter.
I don't think it matters.
Doesn't matter.
I don't know that that's gonna be close enough to...
Yeah.
That's a, that's a year off at least, isn't it?
Well, there, there is a version that's under conference, but I don't know if it's actually...
And when it'll take effect, and when it'll take effect.
Yeah, and then when, you know, subsequent changes would be, you know, right now, you're being ruled by the existing bylaws here, and it would take some time for them to be altered to accommodate any changes at the state level, so...
Dick encouraged me to come before you, to have this discussion before just going and surveying it.
Yeah.
He didn't want us to spend money on the survey if you had objections to this.
So, and we appreciate that, because sometimes things do come up.
And I've had my wrist slapped in the past for not going to the building inspector first for any of these things, because, you know, I mean, you've got, you've got your own building inspector, but a lot of the Hilltowns, you know, they share, and the boards.
So, yeah, so we heard that we seem to be, we seem to be pretty okay with this.
Okay.
Just we're in here, and...
And what was your name again, sir?
Phil Plus.
Phil Plus, oh, you're a real estate, okay.
He was still with Rachel's mom years ago.
That's right. Phil, you have an extra copy of that.
Can you, um...
I gave them all my...
Yeah, you can have, you can have this.
I'll grab one of those.
Twenty, what was that thing you were just reading, twenty-two? Non-conforming, twenty-two fifty-four?
I think that was it.
Non-conforming, single and two-family residential. So we'll make sure we pull that back out when we get this, so we're actually looking at the facts.
Okay.
We'd like to do once in a while.
You like to look at the facts, do you?
Occasionally.
Okay.
We're set.
Thank you so much, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
No, I should keep this open.
I know, that's us. Jamming around.
So we have a new business discussion of subdivision bylaw. Did one of our members here ask to put that on the agenda?
Put me, put me.
Oh.
You're gonna get blamed.
You're gonna blame for everything, Kip. Blame it on Kip.
Did this come from, from Dick, Dick Kalaszewski?
I mean, I...
Did it come from you, Pat?
It did not come from me.
Well, we have no information.
But it might have come from Doug, because I had been invited to a preliminary meeting last month of a potential subdivision application.
Oh, yes.
So it came up in the course of that discussion that, you know, your subdivision regs are pretty old. They, the last date on here, they're September two thousand five. And so I guess there was some...
It's not that old.
No.
Wow.
A lot of them...
Not as old as me, so it's spring chicken. But, but yeah, so I, I assumed that maybe he had put it on as a result, just to take a look at it. There's a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of towns are making changes in their subdivision regulations to make better accommodation for low-impact development.
Is it in our book?
It's in your book. I don't, you'd have to look at the table of contents to see what it is, but it's, I believe it's in there. I think it's in there. If not, we'll get you a copy of it.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be prudent to wait until we see what the state hands down before we start messing with this?
Start working something to have to do it again.
I mean, it's, you know, it's something that would take some time to go through and revise. Typically, what people are doing is, as I say, providing requirements for low-impact development, and maybe restricting the, a lot of old subdivision regs that around the county require broader streets, and is considered necessary for today's, you know, attempt to restrict the amount of asphalt and impervious surface. But people can't do less, because it's required in the subdivision, so that's one of the things that has made a bunch of people look at, just to try to make it more simpler and flexible to do smaller types of roadways.
Smaller developments, smaller roadways.
And to do things that aren't as pipe and pond in regard to the sewers and stormwater and so forth. So that's what a lot of people...
Is there some, is also some issue of making smaller lots, or so, I mean, this was something that...
The lot size is set, the zoning, but this is, so the subdivision of land really is about the infrastructure and the relevant requirements for that, that's, that's what this sets up. So that's certainly something that you guys might decide to look at at some point in the future, but as Kip says, maybe, maybe more focused on a specific need rather than just starting in because, you know, it's a lot of work.
Depends on what the state comes out with, too, because if we start working on something, then they, they change.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know if they're actually looking at chapter eighty-one on the subdivision now, if that's part of the zoning reform. There are some things in the zoning reform that I think would have some impact on, I think there are some elements of it, but I haven't studied it closely enough to know, so it may make sense to wait.
So this was in, so there was a meeting with Mr. Reitman? This was in reference to a potential project?
I'm not sure the extent to which I'm at liberty to divulge the details.
All right, I got an email, so as far as I'm, I know, I have to disclose that, but...
Yeah, who is it, and what is it?
So someone approached Dick at the building inspector, and they said it's a potentially sizable development, and they wanted to get zoning board and planning board and building inspector and the admin, just to see what all the different procedures are, because if it's gonna need a site plan and this, you know, that, they wanted to make sure we were kinda coordinated. I could not, I was away that week, I think I sent it out, I think I sent it out to everybody, to see if anybody could represent the planning board. I did send it to at least Paul and Kip, because that's who I keep, but then Pat could go...
Yeah, I was the only one, as a representative of the planning board, who was able to be there.
So we might see it at the next, at a meeting in the near future?
At that point in time, there was a plan to come up with it by the end of the summer, but I don't know if there'd be subsequent, there may have been some developments.
So I think it might have been put on the agenda, because in case it was further along or something, so... All right, great.
So, so since I don't know where it is in my book,
I will double-check, I'll double-check when I get back to the office this week, and if it's not, I'll bring you copies, put in your book for the next meeting.
What's that, the subdivision bylaw?
Yeah.
It's gotta be in there.
I know.
Well, you know, we focus so much on zoning, and we've never done any subdivision. It's possible that we overlooked it.
Chapter two sixty-four?
Yeah.
Subdivision of land, right here, chapter thirteen.
Thirteen.
Tab thirteen.
That makes me feel...
There it is.
I knew I brought this for a reason. I've been flopping around in here.
So it's...
Good.
I didn't, you know, I saw that on the agenda, but as we're sort of in between contracts right now, I didn't take any extra time to look at it until such time as you had directed me that you wanted to undertake that effort.
Well, generally, we get money from somewhere when we try to do that kind of a thing.
Right, and that's what we were...
You know, and that's the, that's where the rub would come on that. You know what I mean?
There it is.
We got, we got all that money to look at the property on five and ten up here, you know, in the C, the C-one, C-two district and the, all that, and we spent a lot of time on that, and...
That's if we wanted to make a change to the...
That's out of your own contract, yeah.
That's right, that's what I'm saying, so...
Yeah, you guys did that out of your own contract.
So we usually try to find some money somewhere to cover it, rather than trying to do it out of our budget.
Now, what came out of your budget that review?
So actually, that can bring us to another item on the agenda that's not on the agenda, that I would like to put on the agenda, is the FERCog contract.
Yes.
I thought we had that on.
We have.
That's under new business, so we'll make that D.
I guess I should have pointed that out, and I didn't. I had sent you guys an invoice for the final quarter of FY sixteen and a draft contract for FY seventeen, so I have copies of those, I can pass out to you. So this is the invoice with the break narrative report, and this is the contract. The invoice and the narrative report are a little bit different from what you got. They're a little bit different from what you see before, because it included the peer review work for the whole book, and that all got accounted for separately. And then likewise, when the contract is rewritten, it had to incorporate that as a path going forward. So it's some, some new language to allow for that. And in the course of doing that, we just reorganized, kind of cleaned it up a little bit.
So page four, what was, is billable, what included the Eagle Book solar peer review?
You're on the invoice?
Yeah, that's not, that's not part of the other invoice.
So what we do now in terms of the task schedule here, is this is actually recorded on staff timesheets by each one of these individual tasks.
So is this, is this the billing?
This is the billing, yes. So we're looking at the final, trying to get that bill.
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
The task tracking sheet.
Pat, excuse me, I have two of the same thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So we get, we get these billing sheets quarterly. I think, we often bring it here. Sometimes, I think sometimes maybe I just approve it, but no. But the new thing is that page four, which is the, the billing for a specific, uh, that we agreed to several months ago, that we would also hire FERCog to do peer review.
Oh, I see. The first, the first one is two pages, then three.
Yeah, and then there's, then there's single pages after that, just the copier did it. Um, so typically, I would have just had the task hour breakouts there, but then, so when we, on the eve, the second task, the Eagle Book solar peer review, we went ahead and did the calculation with the exact hourly rate and overhead to show you the dollar amount then for that review. So in this case, um, the thirty-six hours and a half that were spent on it totaled two thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and four cents. The estimate had been three thousand dollars. So if, as is anticipated, according to the statements made by the Eagle Book representatives at the last meeting, they withdraw this application, then that difference would be remandable to the applicant. And I note in the letter that that amount that would be able to be refunded to them is seven hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, plus any interest. But nowadays, interest is negligible.
Can't be much interest, yeah, that's right.
But so that would, so, um, if however it were to proceed and there were more work on it, then that would be different. But as of that meeting last month, I've, since then, I've done no more work on that project.
Okay.
According to the chair, we'll be full stop, and that's what we did, because nothing more to do at that point in time. You will see some additional billing admin time associated with this, because we had to make all of these changes. We had internal reviews on the utilization of the peer review process. We had, um, different staff working on the contract updates and invoices, developing the new timesheet format and all of that, so. But the good news is that initial work is done, so as we proceed in the future, those are all in place, and so that was kind of a one-time charge to get it set up.
So now do I understand that we have to vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
So on the, um, the April to June statement, that's for all of the work combined, correct?
Yes.
And the, the budget last time was fifteen thousand, or why do I think I remember?
It was ten thousand, and then we executed a budget amendment to allow for the peer review to occur, because we wouldn't have been able to have done even the three thousand dollars under the existing contract, because we were too close to the ten thousand.
Yeah.
So the contract then was executed for a five thousand dollar additional budget, three thousand anticipated for the Eagle Book review, and two thousand for anything else that you guys might have wanted me to do before the end of the year.
So you maybe just went over this, but is, so is all of this on this invoice associated with the Eagle Book?
No, you look at that task schedule and you, so you can see that, um, the thirty-six and a half hours were the actual peer review.
Yep.
Then there were six and a half hours that were administrative, really relating to contracts and agendas and so forth, that, that were attached to Eagle Book, but not necessarily billable to the applicant, because they were your administrative work for the town. Not this distinct review of the proposal itself. And then, um, we had some admin support, like where I came out for that, uh, preliminary review, that time shows in here, so that's not specifically related to a, an existing proposal. But it's not just straight admin either. It was a, you know, a project-related task. And then the billing admin is just the straight time on creating the documents and filling out the forms and getting the financial records together.
So that the June, the fifteen hours for billing and admin seems high.
Well, as I explained, that's because of all of the work we had to do to make all these changes to accommodate the peer review going forward.
But those, now those changes are now made.
They're in place.
You want us to do that again?
The timesheet's set, if, you know, this task sheet's in place, so we can just change it. For the next peer review, we just change this from Eagle Book solar to whatever the name of that is. There might even be more than one. We could accommodate that as well, if there were more than one ongoing.
So what problem would it cause to keep the contract amount at ten thousand dollars and amend it again if it needs fee?
Could do that if you wished.
I'm just, wait, you're, you're jumping ahead to the next.
He's jumping ahead to the contract then.
Let's, let's decide if we want to approve this invoice first. So does everybody understand? So we're going to pay FERCog four thousand six hundred seventy-three-one, but we're going to get twenty-two forty-eight of that back from-
You should already have it in the account.
Well, we have it, but if we can, then it's in an escrow until we take it, right?
Right.
So, yeah. So in effect, this is really twenty-four hundred for-
Now, when we increase this contract, though-
So, so we, can we finish the bill? Everybody okay with the bill?
Well, I don't-
Well, I'm looking at the bill here, and it's talking about, it's talking about other stuff than just the bottom line here. It's talking about stuff in here, and I just wanted some clarification in my mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that, I think we asked for seventy-five hundred dollars or eight thousand for a budget, and now it's going to be fifteen, even though it was bud, even though it was voted by the town to be, didn't we ask for seventy-five hundred to be our budget?
Yeah, but it's- Last year, we asked for ten, and then we added five to it, but the five was coming from peer review. So we really didn't, or revolving, sorry, coming from our-
Oh, this is revolving, not the, not the regular fund, because we, we dropped it from ten.
That's, oh, I'm, I'm, I don't get involved at that level. You guys are going to have that.
Remember, we had that discussion here about dropping our thing from ten down to-
And this, what we pay the FERCog can come out of our, our annual budget and our revolving and our peer, and so that's a structure.
What I'm getting at is we're, uh, what does this fifteen thousand mean that's in here then? That's what I'm not sure.
Okay, well, so what we, we need to do is just decide that we can pay this, that ultimately this is, um-
Yeah.
As far as we can see, it's a forty-six hundred, forty-six, seventy thirty-two. We need to approve that.
Okay, we can approve that.
Knowing that, at this point, we own twenty-four, um, two thousand four hundred and twenty-two.
Will come back from-
No, the opposite. I mean, more or less, it's twenty-two, um, two thousand two hundred and forty-eight, um, will come back from the applicant, so that means-
Well, they've already given it to us.
Right, 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 right. But in other words, so of that, that comes, draws off of our budget. It's the twenty-four, two thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. So just knowing that, I think that's what we need to be able to say yes, or say yes to that, and that's a-
That fifteen thousand shows on the first page of the, the invoice, because as the current approved budget, because that was what had been voted in that contract extension.
Right.
There's a footnote to that effect. There.
Okay, but that, that's the part I want to talk about. But if we do, we got a vote on the forty-six, let's do it and then go back to the other.
That's what I think.
All right, all those in favor of?
Well, I, I moved it.
No, you can move.
I'll move it.
Thanks.
I moved that we pay this bill.
All in favor?
Seconded it.
Seconded it. Let me, let me get this here. FERCog contract, pay forty-six seventy-three-one, moved by who?
Rachel.
Rachel.
Seconded by you.
Okay. Okay, I've got you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed?
Six zero zero.
Yeah. And, and, you know, this is something I should check with, um, other people, because I think there's been several bills that, as chair, I've, I've authorized payment on. I'm not sure we-
Always vote on it.
Always vote on it? We should probably be more consistent, because as you said, it, it's a little bit after the fact. It's, it's when we ask Pat to do some work, we're basically saying, we're going to pay you for it.
Right.
You know, and, and then it's up to us to say stop or something.
Well, this is the way we know how much all that work costs. I mean, I think that's the only thing.
Well, that's, that's okay. I don't have a problem with that.
It's good to review it, but I don't want to have to have it approved.
Every time.
You know, because what if two people say, I don't like this, like, what are we going to do?
Because it's work we've already commissioned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so maybe we don't, so your point is, we don't necessarily have to vote to do it.
It becomes more of an admin function, yeah.
Right, right, right.
But my, my question is, so that, is this, is this bullet number four on this first page of the bill that says fifteen thousand dollar contract? Is that a compilation of different accounts?
I'm sorry, bullet where? You're, you're in the actual new contract?
No, 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 I got it, Pat, Pat, I got it.
In the very first page?
Right.
Is this a compilation of more than one account?
Yes. It's the, it's our annual budget.
Yeah.
And our revolving fund. And our peer review fund.
Which is on page six of this, if you look on this contract, it says that.
He's talking about this past year, that's, I just, this other contract.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it straight, because normally, I would think you would account for each, each account, each line item differently.
But the FERCog doesn't care where it's coming from. That's our business, where it comes from. They're just have a fifteen thousand dollar contract. We need Doug here, and I'd like to actually postpone any more detail about this to get our minister here, because he's got the breakdown along with our, our accountant at, at the town hall. That's what we care about, but as far as FERCog.
Well, I don't care that they get their mon, you know, I care that you get your money, but I'm just saying that when I'm looking at this here and I'm trying to relate it to our budget, I don't see the relationship at all.
So that's our responsibility, and I'll ask, I'll ask Doug to break, break that down for the next-
I'm always happy to come before and answer any questions, and we've worked to expand the way the information is provided to you, so that you will then have what you need to make those determinations as to the pots of money, but that, but I, but that's, that's up to you guys.
All right, so now, we want to look at, for this fiscal year, start, which started last, you know, on July first, two thousand sixteen. That we want to engage the, the FERCog in a similar way we have the past couple of years.
So as I said, we did make changes here to accommodate the forty-four fifty-three G peer review, so you can see that in, you know, payments to the consultant under Article Five, for example, um, and then, um, we also added a non-discrimination clause, which is Article twelve. And what we did, the scope of services, and you'll see now, are longer than they did before, because on the advice of our procurement officer, we moved all of the text that had been elsewhere relating to scope into this one location, so that it's all in one place. We added a task two, which is to continue to provide peer review technical assistance on projects as assigned. We added, uh, task three to allow for subdivision proposal review, because that had not been identified before, and thinking that that might come forward this year. So that is also new there.
I mean, we keep discussing this and it keeps raising the questions in my mind, is that we, we have a guy come in and he gives us three thousand dollars for peer review, that's basically put in an account somewhere separate from our, from our, uh, either, either our revolving account or our budget account.
Correct.
And it's kept separately, and so I'm trying to, I'm trying to reconcile that with saying, we're, you're going to, we're going to give you a contract for fifteen thousand dollars. So my way of thinking, that number should be the amount of our budget that we're paying for you to do.
It's enough to figure.
Well, just let me finish it. And then in addition to that, as things come up unexpected, there's special accounts set up that you bid on and the, and the, the person pays you through us.
No, because we would have to, we'd, that has to be under some kind of contract with the towns. We would either have to separately contract for each of those peer reviews, which, when we did the legal review in-house, um, my superiors did not want to do that. They wanted it under the existing contract, so the other protections that are inherent in this contract also apply.
Well, when we first, when we first talked about this, I thought it was set up that each one had to be a separate account and had to be held there.
That's your accounting on your end. That has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
I will send you a letter, so anytime you ask for us to do a peer review, we will send you a letter outlining what we estimate, you know, what the tasks are and what we estimate it'll cost. So you'll have that, and then that's asked of the applicant, that's put in that account, and that's what was done in this case. And that's why I, I did the accounting, so that you could see how much money was not expended, so that that could be duly returned as per the statute to the applicant.
And to, to help you understand this, let's just say we have a contract with the FERCog for ten thousand dollars. Then a project comes up and the peer review is going to be ten thousand dollars. We have to do an amendment to, up theirs to twenty. And then two months later, we get another big job. We have to make the amendment. So it could go all the way up. So at the end of the year, it would say our contract fund was sixty thousand, although the taxpayers didn't pay that, because it was all coming from the applicant.
Yeah, it was in and out kind of.
But that's where that larger number comes from.
But it comes.
All right, well, that's, that's different than we originally had done.
No, no, because it's the same, it's just that where's the money coming from? You just got to understand that the money comes from these peer reviews.
I think I understand what you're saying, yeah.
And as you had suggested before, if you wanted to, we could go back to ten thousand and do an amendment later if that, you know, was preferable to the town. It's just, it's just an administrative nut, you know, kind of a hassle, and it has, it says up to.
Right.
So it's not like you're committing to spending the whole thing, but I leave it to your discretion to determine in discussions amongst yourselves, and it's really the board of selectmen that signs this, so you will have that.
I, and my only thing that I was thinking about is that if that number is up there, fifteen thousand, and then it's like, well, you know, you've got this room, this much money left in your budget, so you can do this, and that's where I think if the, the number is smaller, it would kind of keep that into, not that we wouldn't do it, but at least the mu, you know, you wouldn't have that mentality of just, you know, well, there's extra money there, so we could do it.
So my way of thinking-
Can I just get, Paul, can I respond? You've been saying a lot of things.
Okay, go ahead.
And I think, again, the contract with the FERCog is totally separate from the planning board's budget and our revolving fund.
I understand.
And so I think your point is, it's, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure we only hire them when we really need them.
Exactly.
And I love this, because I think, and I've said this many occasions, that as a volunteer board, we only have so much time, and we only have so much expertise, and so it's great to have an organization like this that has that. And, but I do think you're right, that we should not just say, oh, go off and do lots of work, that we should say, okay, do this work, this is what we need for next month or the next two months. So I, I just want to say that that's our responsibility.
It is. And it is twofold thing. One is that we, you know, the, the budget that we get from the town, we need to be responsible for, but also for the applicants, you know, we, we have to, you know, keep their, you know, costs in mind.
Yep. And make sure that we're getting the information, you know, correct information, you know.
Well, what it, what it sounded like to me is like, it's another revolving fund rather than Vic looking it in with our-
No, it's, it's just, it's just a reflection of the time put into it.
Any other questions on the contract?
Is there any way to, like, the admin support, billing and admin, of putting it on the job, because I know if I filled out my timesheet like this, I'd get all kinds of phone calls. If you have to assign it to a job.
Well, you know, for example, if I help review, uh, an agenda, and there's three items on the agenda, you know, then I'd have to separate it out by three, and then there may not be an existing task for one of those items on the agenda, so. And then you'll be paying me for yet more administrative time to divide things up even, you know, more finely. And I could certainly keep more detailed records if you guys wish. You know, I can say, I can say each, like, this is a call from the building commissioner, this is a call from the town administrator, this is a call from the town clerk, you know, but each, every piece of the additional detail, you know, costs me time.
Are there a few charges for coming here to do these contracts to? Like tonight?
Are you on the clock?
Yeah.
I'm, this is, this is my, um, this is-
Penance for being-
No. I'm, I'm here in the absence of a contract to assist in any way, so this is, this is my good faith presentation here today.
Time will be added later, but you can do it.
Well, no, but-
Ultimately, a contract would be billed for my presentation.
She is on the clock when she's, she's getting paid when she's here, which is, that's, that's the job. So our job is to ask the select board to sign this, I think, really. We're not supporting, uh-
Yes, it is signed by the select board.
So they have a motion to, um-
I think we already voted to pay it.
No, now we're talking about the next year's contract.
Oh, oh, the second, okay, the second thing, all right.
This we actually do need to vote on.
This we actually need to vote on. So entertain the motion that the planning board, uh, requested the select board approve this contract.
Before, do you want to amend the dollar amount, or you want to leave it as fifteen?
Well, what is that? I had that one here, and now I can't.
I like not to exceed fifteen.
I know, I, I have.
Because doing an amendment costs money. It takes time, and it would get billed a couple hundred bucks for it, so.
I see.
You know, if you look at it that way.
So this one is what again, John? This, this one here is what again?
This is a contract with the FERCog. Hopefully, we're going to keep getting Pat Smith when we want to ask her to do some work with us, whether it's a site plan review or-
Okay, all right.
This is the FY twenty seventeen contract.
So it's from last week, July, July first to next June.
All right, yep.
For not to exceed fifteen, so up to fifteen thousand, but it's all in our discretion, if we spend two thousand or fifteen thousand.
And Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we, now that we're doing estimates ahead and peer review, you know, we could also have more of a discussion when a task is assigned about some estimates of time and some limits that could be set, so then we could revisit, you know, so it's not just an open book at all, right?
I understand, and I agree with what you said about changing, making amendments, but this contract is, um, and I understand that it's up to that amount. I'm just a little concerned that if we hire her to do things, whether it's zoning regulations or stuff, that, you know, is going to be our expense, not an applicant's. That's where I'd like some sort of limit, is not to go to that fifteen thousand, you know? And I, I'm not sure right now how to implement the restraint, uh, of limiting that. You know?
Well, our operating budget's only seventy-five.
Seventy-five, right. So anything over that, so we'd-
Comes out of our, either revolving loan or, yeah. So I guess that's kind of a restraint. You, you've been doing this quarterly, I think, you give bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so maybe we just have to, every three months, make sure it's on our agenda, because I think we don't look at it sometimes, and then eight months go by and it's like, oh, I didn't know. So that's the other way to do it.
The other thing I would say in response to that is that if you look at the budget on page six of the attachment.
Right.
Um, it has five, just over five thousand dollars for that task two for peer review, so by definition, that much is put aside for peer reviews. In the, you know, and as you're thinking of it at the beginning, so, while, while it isn't, you know, it doesn't strictly delegate where, where it comes from, it does, it does set that parameter from the beginning that, that the, the work for the town would, would come up to, you know, ten thousand, and that any reviews would be above that.
The, the subdivision app, application review, is that, um, an applicant pays that fee? So-
That might potentially also, why, we'd have to look into, I have to double check. I think forty-four fifty-three G does also apply to subdivision reviews.
So if you take the other two, the, just a general, uh, console, the other one, it, it, that adds to seventy-five hundred, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Did you, you say something there adds up to seventy-five hundred?
Yeah.
Which ones?
Number one and number four.
Number one and number four.
Which are the ones that we would never, we couldn't ask an applicant to help.
Okay, all right, that's, that's good. I like to see that. I like to understand, you know, I mean, we sign a contract for fifteen thousand dollars and, and the people tell us we can spend seventy-five hundred, we just need to define it better, how we know where it's coming from.
It's up to, it's, first of all, it's up to, and that additional, uh, what is it, sixty-five hundred, I don't know, seventy, that additional money, the extra seventy-five hundred, would, would be reimbursed by the applications and-
Yeah, okay, that's fine, as long as it's there.
And if we have nobody comes with any requests for us this next year, we don't need anyone, so.
So, so I think we're looking at a-
Motion to adjourn.
We're making, we're making a motion to sign a contract for FY seventeen, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I just moved it.
Rachel did it.
I moved that we submit this to the-
Kip seconded it.
To the board of select for approval, um-
Rachel moved it, Kip seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Six zero zero. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
To another interesting and exciting year with the planning board.
Or not.
We'd love it not to be not. Not looks good.
That, that Chinese proverb, maybe live in interesting times, right? You know, please no.
And, uh, we've set our date for August first, so just- And we've set our date for August 1st, so just in that regard, so we'll have exchanges. We'll find out if anything else to do with Eagle Book, which we probably think not. We'll follow up on potential subdivision, those are the only two things that might come up.
Yeah, at this point, it doesn't seem like I need to be there on August 1st.
And actually, I wanted to mention one other thing that's happening in town. I've been asked to attend the meeting on July 27 with the select board, where they're going to talk about housing, and maybe senior housing, is that still on that agenda? It was.
Haven't heard a thing of it.
There's some discussion, again, about senior housing in town, imagine that, it keeps coming back.
Who, who asked you, who notified you that?
The, there's actually a new executive director of the Franklin Regional Housing Authority.
Yeah.
And she had an email with Doug and, I guess Carolyn, I thought it went to the whole planning board, the whole select board, but maybe not. But it was in response to our, our housing production plan, which we, the planning board actually was doing a lot of work on it for a couple of years. And we kind of just wanted to get it back on the table to see if there's any movement in it.
I think it also.
It's not a recommendation, it's just a little discussion to see if the Housing Authority might be able to help, I think is the offer.
Which Housing Authority, that's the question.
Franklin Regional.
Right, because we don't have one in this town.
Right.
And it also came up, it's come up a lot during the C.
So I know.
CTC.
PTC.
C is we don't have.
There's a ton of money sitting there, asking about the housing, and no one has any projects.
I know, it can't be used for anything else.
So not that they're looking to spend them, but if we have a need and we have money, let's, let's do something.
And someone's wrong. Without going into any more detail, that was related to the proposal that we had the preliminary meeting about.
Oh, okay.
Well, maybe that's why then, there you go.
I think I heard a motion to adjourn.
I was meaning.
I was going to ask that we look at the mail first.
Okay, all right.
I'll go back to the cheap seats.
And most of it is just our lovely neighborhood towns telling us that good things are happening, and they're making. I don't see any special, like, request to us. Something about digesters, what is that, is that green?
Is it, is it Melnick's digest?
That's what I'm wondering, planning board, from Barway Farm.
Yeah, Melnick, it's Melnick, yeah.
So, but I don't know why, this is, this is from Director of Division of Agricultural Conservation and Technical Assistance, and it's written to Mr. Jorgensen from AG, AG Green Energy. You have requested an opinion from the Mass Department of Ag Resources as to the agricultural status of an, of on-farm anaerobic digesters for the purpose of a local permit. So Barway Farm near Deerfield has a, received this.
It's underway quite a bit.
Oh, this is like, this is dated 2013, why is this in our new mail?
I've been digesting methane over there for a long time, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been digesting.
Greenfield Economic Development.
There's a really interesting workshop up there by this Kate Downs, if anybody knows her, it's about aging in place, this, by the way.
Getting old just sitting here.
I'm, I'm, we worked with her, she's great, I would just recommend it to anybody who has aging issues in their family.
Well, just, just for your information.
I think we're all getting older.
I know, I just took a picture of it, this.
The what?
Yes. She's doing it at the Senior Center, it's about ways to, you know, pay for in, like, staying in your home, we talked a lot about this. Staying in your home with people coming into your house, right, so in-home care.
Anything else?
Good.
Sorry.
Is that it?
Motion.
A motion to adjourn!
Rachel, second, yeah, Rachel and Kip.
Motion is executed.
And it's 8:16.
Peace out.